So. So we're good? We're good.
Sort of.
Exactly.
Oh, no, he's playing basketball.
Twelve o'clock. Please rise for the, uh, pledge of, location and pledge of flag. Heavenly Father, we gather here today to discuss the important financial issues that are facing the city. Give our council the guidance that we need to effectively balance this budget with the least amount of burden to our residents. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Eddinger? Mr. Pinnabone?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Rose? Uh, Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Ms. Sultana?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Here.
We also now have the approval of the agenda.
Move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions? Corrections? Roll call.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
City Council in our eastern community. I want to thank City Administrator Campos and Finance Director Mark Leseneki and all of our directors for their work on this budget that I present today. It was an arduous task as well, and they all labored tirelessly to bring about a balanced budget. Not without tough decisions that you have to make, but a balanced budget. I was at the last planning commission meeting and heard ten or fifteen or so residents complain about all the new development that their city were changing the historic character of the city. This could not be further from the truth. In nineteen eighty, I was recipient of the Member of the Year. My store was the Restoration Project of the Year, and I taught local history in Eastern Area School District. Easton's history is one of the most important traits that we have, in my opinion. To that end, we just took action to save the historic Cooper House, the only eighteenth-century building in the city that hasn't been restored. Cities evolve, and we are developing the sites that were promised sixty years ago during urban renewal. For example, the Sheraton that we tore down, the city owns and the Conflits is going up today. That was a project that was included a tall nine-story office building, an indoor mall, and a, and a Class A hotel. What do we get? We got the Days Inn. It was known as the Sheraton back then. But we, we evolved. When I go to Europe, I see buildings that were destroyed by World War II, were bombed out, and now we have new buildings right next door to historic buildings. You need size, scale, and mass, and I was on the Local Historic District Task Force, created by my wife when she was on the city council, to protect our historic resources and our historic assets. I would recommend increases like when we were dying in the past. I was here, I was in nineteen eighties. We would stay up till, we would stay in the office till two, three o'clock in the morning trying to balance the budget, and the only way to balance the budget was by increasing taxes. We don't have to do that today. We have new development that's going to help us, um, balance our budget. We're a growing city. We're no longer the dying city of the past. We've heard, worked hard to encourage this investment in our city, and we've created an Easton vibe, as I was referred to by someone, uh, last night. When they were talking to me, they said, "The Easton vibe is, is very attractive, and we are attracting people from as far as seventy miles away just for dinner." The two, twenty twenty-six budget represented was a challenging budget for all of us in the administration. While inflationary expenses, expenses go up every year. It doesn't matter how much you're growing. It seems that the expenses go up more than you have money for. Simply stated, that means that every year, we must find about two to three, two and a half million dollars of new money to pay for things like, when I was here in the eighties, we bought a pumper for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. You just approved one for one point two million. That's a big increase. Thankfully, Easton is growing, and people and families are moving back to the city. That means increases in our earned income tax, increase of seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars, or an increase of seven point nine percent, as recommended by, recommended by PFM, our consultant for the stamp program. They're looking at our, our finances and our efficiencies, and one of the things they recommended is that we, we were budgeting, I think, at seven point two five percent, and they said that they think it's going to be more like seven point nine percent. That's because there's two hundred seventy-five people living in that building there, and there's two hundred seventy-five that are moving in to that building down there sometime in twenty twenty-six. We wouldn't have that eight hundred thousand dollars if we didn't have new people moving into the city making a good wage. Continuing inflationary pressures on labor, materials, utilities, equipment, healthcare, vehicles, and projects have required adaptive response to balancing this budget. We will continue to invest in maintenance and improvement of infrastructure, infrastructure. We replace more underground, and I know you get the complaints too, and so do I, but we replace more underground infrastructure in the last eighteen years than we have in any time in the recent past. As mayor, I remain focused on keeping the highest real estate taxes we have in the valley, in Easton, in check, because I think that's our job, not to overcharge our residents and not to constantly... Somebody asked me, "Why do you think all this development is taking place?" Because we're financially managed well. We don't increase taxes every year. You can't build a two, a, a hundred-million-dollar project and have your taxes go up five or ten percent a year because they won't come, and they weren't coming. When Easton was going through a period of time when we were raising taxes to five, seven mils, they weren't coming. We have maintained a priority to improve and maintain the fiscal health of our city while creating an Easton vibe that attracts new residents and visitors to our city and diners. While other municipalities in the valleys have raised taxes or cut services, we are presenting a budget that has been leveled for eighteen years with no tax increase and no decrease in services. We still remain with this budget, a full-service city. How long the City of Easton can do that? I don't know. I really don't. But I know for now, we are a full-service city, and I will tell you that I support a fully-paid professional fire department. But it's costing us between eleven and twelve million dollars a year. It's a lot of money, but it's safety, and it saves lives, and that's what it's all about. So how do we cover the budget gap? My administration always placed that burden on our visitors, not our residents. We haven't raised real estate taxes in eighteen years, and we will not be raising them again next year. Saving our seniors, more than five thousand seniors live in the City of Easton, twelve point nine percent, and saving them money that they would either be spending on groceries, prescription drugs, or utilities or housing expenses. Allow me to highlight the revenue expense, the revenue included in this budget, because it's, it's going to take some tough decisions. Directly related to the development taking place in our city is an increase of four point nine percent or four hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars more in real estate tax revenue. Let me repeat that. We are not raising the millage. So everybody else is paying the same amount of money, but that building and that building will be about a million dollars a year in real estate tax. That's a lot of money. Also tied to the new development is the earned income tax, which is projected as an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, we, we, we raised it by six percent. Next year, seven point nine percent, which equates to one hundred fifty thousand dollars. So you want to keep it the same? Then you find one hundred fifty thousand dollars. The U.S. annual inflation rate was two point nine percent as of August twenty twenty-five. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the core inflation rate, which includes volatile food and energy prices, remains steady at three point one percent for the same twelve-month period. So with that said, our seven point nine increase in EIT next year is two and a half times the inflation rate. As I stated, this budget projects earned income tax at an increase of seven point nine percent. Non-resident EIT was eliminated because our pension funds are doing very well and we're over seventy percent. So we had to get rid of the, the non-resident EIT, which was put in place back in the eighties. Not very, very controversial, especially at the county, but there will be some money in here that's still left over in two thousand twenty-four budget, a bleed over from people who are still paying. LERTA tax exemption. Now, LERTA is a tax tool, a tool that we're using for development to phase in the development of new taxes, of new appraisals. So over the next ten years, we, we've been here eighteen, eighteen years, and the first project, for example, is the hundred-million-dollar Simone Silk Mill. Those rates are now part of our real estate taxes. They're coming off the rolls. All those early developments are coming off the rolls, and we have about four point five percent increase without raising taxes. Trash rates. Our trash contract has gone up again by a hundred and nine thou, almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we're in, we're, we're asking for an increase of two dollars per month for that, each household. We worked hard to deliver a surplus and have a surplus every year. And the fund balance was increased from a negative four million in two thousand and eight to the current surplus of more than seven million dollars. Parking rates for meters will be three dollars in the prime areas and two dollars and seventy-five cents for all other areas all day. There will no longer be a decrease or an increase at night. This should drive more of our public visiting our downtown to our garages, which will remain at two dollars per hour until five P.M., all day. These changes are projected to bring in an additional five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you, if you want to keep parking meters the same, then you find five hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. Residential parking permits will be increased to one hundred seventy-five dollars per year for the first car in a household, and two hundred twenty-five dollars for the second car, and two hundred seventy-five dollars per car for all cars after the second. It should be noted that this program was started nineteen eighty-seven. If the amount was indexed for inflation, it would be three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, or three hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars per year. So we're still way below the inflationary increase rate. There's no doubt that the downtown parking permit program was a good program to attract people to live in downtown Easton. People want to say, "Why was Easton so dead during the eighties?" Because we, we took three, thirty-five hundred people, we displaced them. We displaced all of them. We, we said, you know, I worked for the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Authority, excuse me. I worked for Redevelopment Authority for two summers while I was going to college, and I had to go out and visit everybody that was displaced from downtown. Where did they live? They lived in two-story Colonials in Palmer and Forks and Bethlehem Township, and they weren't happy. Why weren't they happy? Because they had to drive everywhere they went. If they didn't have a car, a lot of them were seniors, they didn't have a car. Downtown is full of services, and people want to live here, and we brought that back. There's no doubt that this residential parking permit program was a good idea to get people to move back to the downtown, but today, it's adding to our parking problems for visitors, shoppers, and diners. I'm also recommending an increase, as I said, in the trash fee of two dollars per month. And that should cover our one hundred nine thousand dollar expense. On the expense side, this recommended budget includes money necessary to protect our festival events, special events, and farmers' market going public by purchasing traffic barriers at key intersections. This is a very important thing. It's a three hundred thousand dollar item, so it's a big item. But we really believe that because of the success, like this weekend's Garlic Fest, because of the success of our events, we should protect our people from motorists who would decide that they want to cause harm to people who go to those things. This budget includes a negotiated and council-approved contractual agreement with the FOP, and also includes the soon-to-be-approved firefighter agreement. The increase for all employees' healthcare is twenty percent. Healthcare went up twenty percent this year. But no cost has been passed on to the employees in this budget. This budget includes an increase in the administrative staff base of two thousand dollars. I really believe that our directors are underpaid, and it's time that we start matching what other municipalities pay, or we're going to lose them. And adding two thousand dollars isn't a lot of money, but it's all we can come up with in this budget. This budget does not include any increase for the upcoming absentee contract. Fire overtime is projected to be down by twenty, almost twenty-four percent, and that's because we were able to negotiate something into the contract. I'll gladly explain in an executive session if you want me to, but we were allowed, we were, we successfully, thanks to Lewis and Estelle and, and Mark, they were able to negotiate successfully into the contract to change the minimum wage, or the minimum manning. The code enforcement office in this budget is fully staffed. While there's currently five, eight code enforcement officers are included in this budget. H.R. legal expenses are also budgeted a decrease of three hundred fifty thousand dollars because we've settled both the, both contracts to police and the fire that would normally go to arbitration. Our legal expenses would be three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Three positions are being eliminated by my recommended budget, and they are the third solicitor's position, one D.C.E.D. position, and one finance clerk. But this budget does include the hiring of an additional electrician. Public safety continues and must always be the top priority of our administration. It is critical that we provide the necessary resources. I believe the one thing that I'm most proud of is the change in our police department. Our police department is very professional. They're accredited. They've been accredited over five, five times, and we don't have streetwalkers downtown anymore that used to walk the streets. We don't have any of the derelict violence that we had when I was running in two thousand and seven. And I'm very proud that our police department's been able to turn this city around. Public safety continues to be and will always be a priority. It is critical that we provide the necessary resources to keep crime down and make all those who live here or visit here feel safe. On the expense side of the recommended budget, as I said, we include budget money for, um, traffic deterrents from, to protect our special events, farmers' market and special events and festival goers. This budget includes a negotiated, um, firefighters and to assure public safety at our various contracts. I know that three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, and you could say, "Well, I'll just, we'll just delay that for a year." Don't sub, submit to that thinking because we are right now vulnerable for somebody that decides to lose their mind and drive through the crowd and kill or maim somebody. We don't want that to happen. We would rather be proactive than reactive, and I'm asking council to be the same. Public safety touches virtually every department in the city and every function of our government. While our first responders are a crucial part of our services and do incredibly important and valuable work, all city departments have a responsibility to improve the safety in Easton. For example, plowing. When you snow, when it snows, to get out and clear our streets. Our streets are always clearer, thanks to our highway department, than the surrounding municipalities because we want people to be able to get to and from different places safely. Public safety is our number-one priority, and this budget recommends police and fire at full staffing. It does not include any cuts in any of them. The budget includes all the things necessary to run a city effectively. It does not cut any of our vital services. I want to thank all of our city workers who tire, who work tirelessly to serve our neighbors and visitors of Easton in so many way, different ways. This budget is also helping us recruit and highly, and retain highly qualified employees to provide essential services to our residents that they've come to expect. These valued workers are a key part of this mission to create a city government that is a learning and growing organization and works for all people. Easton continues to place emphasis on ensuring healthy neighborhoods across the city. I'm a neighborhood guy. I grew up in the neighborhoods. I would love, people say, "What do you want, what do you think you're most proud of?" I would be most proud when I can honestly feel that a child that grows up in Easton today has the same type of childhood that I had because it was phenomenal. Easton, our Blueprint Communities Grant for the South Side is moving forward and recently held a rib, a ribbon-cutting for a mural project at the, I call it, the intersection of the Saints, St. Joseph's and St. John. One of its objectives is to create more locally-owned small businesses in the neighborhood and restore the pride that each and every neighborhood needs and wants. We will use these methods learned from this blueprint grant for Westward and College Hill as well. I increased code enforcement, as I said, because I'm recommending that we go to full complement so we assure that we protect and keep the historic buildings that we have. Our neighborhoods are full of historic buildings. I live in a house that's over a hundred years old, but close to a hundred twenty-five. We need to make sure that we protect those homes, and the best way to protect them is with code enforcement. Funding is also included for the continuation of my Clean It and Lean It program, which I started back in the eighties, and includes abandoned and neglected properties and places that lean against the property so that the city gets its money back when the property is sold. The twenty twenty-six budget also provides continued funding for Open Gov, Open Gov, an enhanced software package that will allow for the permitting process to be fully executed to the public online, including the ability to submit payments electronically. I also included, we also included in this budget, one hundred thousand dollars for the two hundred fiftieth celebration of our country. It's going to be a very important year. Easton was the site of the third reading of the Declaration of Independence, and Heritage Day is going to be spectacular. It's the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of our country, and we've already been told by the fireworks company that does our fireworks that next year, it's going to be very expensive. They won't even come and do your firework display without a twenty thousand dollar They won't even come and do your firework display without a twenty thousand dollar con, minimum of twenty thousand dollars because there's so much demand to have the celebrations. Standard Imports, better known as S and P, reaffirmed the city's A bond rating and gave us a stable outlook. So you say, okay, big deal. Well, this is a big deal. Because that's a major improvement over the negative impact maybe that we've had. It continues to be the highest rating in the city's history, steadily improving from the triple B rating we all remember in two thousand and eight and moving from negative to stable. And in S and P cites our strong financial management in the report for the last fifteen years. This credit rating focuses on the city's strong institutional core by highlighting Easton's management with strong financial policies and practices. Strong budgetary performance and strong budgetary flexibility. These ratings demonstrate how well the city has recovered since the last economic downturn. Council recall, will recall, most of you were on council at the time, that during COVID, we refinanced our debt at two point nine percent, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in debt service payments. That was a smart decision and we thank you for supporting the administration's recommendation. The city maintained the highest bond rating in recent history largely due to our commitment to fiscal excellence and not spending our reserves. We, this budget does not dip into our reserves again. We continue to aggressively address our unfunded pension liability through sound investment in an effort to enhance our financial stability. And I use, I would like to bring Morgan Stanley in to give you an update on our pension plans, but when we took office in two thousand and eight, they were at fifty-six million dollars. We're, we're just teeter tottering on the hundred million dollar range. So we're, we're very successful. I consider this budget to be a responsible budget in a challenging fiscal environment for all municipalities. Overall revenue is flat, so we needed to manage expenses within, within our control. For example, casino revenue, which was a major boost to our budget when the sands was open and now Wind Creek, we're projecting a decrease of almost a hundred thirty thousand dollars next year in gaming money. Because people during this time have to decide whether they're going to gamble or whether they're going to buy food and they're going to obviously buy food, or at least I hope so. I firmly believe we can and must continue to invest in the city's resources in the right places so that services improve, streets are safer, neighborhoods go stronger and parks thrive with kids recreating and having a good time. As mayor, I will work tirelessly to ensure that Easton continues to prosper and remains resilient in the wake of any challenge, no matter how difficult. We've been tested many times in the face of adversity. Our administration began with the financial crisis of two thousand and eight and nine. Then we experienced COVID shutdown of the city and today we've, we face rising inflation of materials and federal government cutbacks. We continue to rise to the occasion for the betterment of our city and our community. I am proud of the efforts by the entire city team. Our cabinet members, our supervisors, our city employees who work hard every day for the magnificent turnaround that our city has made. I can't thank them enough. We as elected officials may get the credit, but really the employees are doing a fantastic job. As I approach the end of my five terms as mayor, I am deeply grateful for the people of Easton for their support during the past eighteen years and now almost nineteen. Working together, we have made great strides as a city. We achieved our vision of being a growing city, consistently embraced diversity and created many new avenues for opportunity for all people. I know full well that there's still much to do and there's much to be accomplished, but I remain confident that Easton's best stays remain ahead. It was said that great cities aren't accidents. They are built to last. Built to weather tough seasons, built not just for the next year, but for the next generation. That's what this budget is about, building a city to last. City council will be asked to make some tough decisions, so let's talk about them. The budget makes disciplined choices to keep Easton city a strong city for the long term. We are protecting the services our residents rely on and investing in programs that work. And we are building a city that our kids and grandkids will be proud to call home. I always show the Easton Red Rover football team coming out of the fieldhouse with the Easton flag. I don't think you would have seen that eighteen years ago. Those kids, those athletes carry the Easton flag out of the fieldhouse every game. And we're very proud of that. Working together, we're addressing significant challenges facing affordable housing providers and taking advantage of the opportunity to create new places, new places for people to live. Let me say again, without this new development, we would be raising taxes or fees every year and we wouldn't be able to create the Easton vibe that now, that we now have in Easton. We are attracting visitors from as far as seventy miles away to dine at our restaurants and shop in our small businesses and attend our special events. For the first time in fifty years, we have people and families looking to Easton to live and raise their families. Our population today is thirty thousand four hundred thirty, up from twenty-six thousand in two thousand and eight. Now, some people say, well, we don't need more people. Well, then try balancing the city budget without it. Because that's seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars that's coming in the I T. Isn't just coming because people are making more money, but it's also coming because there's more people. Easton has a long history of resilience. We, we faced hurricanes, floods, pandemics and academic challenges before and overcome them, overcome them by working together. I am confident that we'll do the same now. This budget is balanced, responsible and realistic. It reflects the seriousness of our financial situation. But also our enduring optimism, strength and determination to keep Easton moving for everyone. We will move forward. As one business owner tells me all the time, I was here when downtown was dead and I couldn't pay my bills. Now you may have a hard time finding a parking place, but guess what? I'm busy and I can pay my bills and I'm still in business. So what about the future? As I said, there's still much to do. Especially when it comes to capital improvements. You, you approved the capital budget that was presented to you, I think, last month. Last summer. But as I said, there's still much to do. So in addition to the regular duties of running a city, I've made several goals for myself in the last two years. I will be working on raising the money for a community center slash senior center because we don't have a senior center in the city. We used to have three senior centers in the city. Now we only have, East Area Community Center has a senior center that they, they, they have. The center will house its own senior center for our golden centers to socialize, recreate and get a hot lunch daily. This center will also house a full-size gym so that our youth and our adults can enjoy basketball, volleyball and other sports to keep them healthy. I can't stand here knowing that kids are playing in the streets. I am working with East Area Community Centers to assist with the program. Over on the South Side, we have the Boys and Girls Club and Shiloh is getting ready to build their own youth, their own community center. But there are community center that we build in the West Ward. We will also be housed a Larry Holmes Museum area of the, of the community center to highlight our own internationally recognized and well-respected heavyweight. We will continue to work on our waterfront plan to make our waterfront currently a rough, currently very rough, into the gem that it is. We have a magnificent waterfront that needed to be showcased. The show, the, the, there are people who say, well, it can't be done. We cannot do it with our own money. We have to use O P M, other people's money. And that means getting out to Harrisburg and, and having them buy into the waterfront plan to make our city the gateway to Pennsylvania that it should be. Our newest dilemma is upgrading our fire equipment has been very important. We've purchased another tiller. We've purchased, that's the second third ladder truck I've purchased as mayor. We've purchased pumpers. We had Lafayette College donate a pumper. And now we're going to get ready to do our firehouses. Our three firehouses must be a priority. They are part of our capital budget submitted to council last month and they need to be replaced or modernized. For example, our newest firehouse is Fire Central. Fire Central was built more than fifty years ago. Fred Ashton was the mayor when that was born, when that was built. It was built with no money, no local tax dollars. It was all from the federal government. The neighborhood stations are even a little older, South Side and College Hill. South Side Fire Station was built when hand-operated pumps were pulled by horses. There's still horse stalls at the fire station on South Side. City council must deal with our two pools and the time is now. Both Highland and Eddie's Side need capital improvements that will cost millions of dollars of our limited tax dollars. Tough decisions, decisions need to be made about our pools. The alternative, alternatives to close one or both pools. Tonight I am recommending that emergency repairs needed in Highland Pool be scheduled for twenty twenty-six. This will necessitate the closure for the entire twenty twenty-six season. This was a tough decision, but it's necessary, needed and needed to be made. There are, these are repairs that cannot wait and will assure that we have Highland Pool for another twenty years. We've come, and maybe what we do, since Eddie's Side is the only, if we can hire trolley drivers, people with a license to drive a bus with passengers, a C D L with passengers. Maybe we'll run a, a, a trolley around how, around the South Side neighborhood like at twelve thirty, one o'clock and go down to Eddie's Side. So they don't, they have a way to get to Eddie's Side. But closing that pool is going to be a city council decision. And we don't believe in the administration and if you read the report that was given to you about our pools, we cannot wait another year to do Highland Pool. What it needs is physical upgrades that the, the skimmer is a stainless steel skimmer that goes around the edge of the pool. It collects the debris and it takes it through the filter, traps it in the filter. And what happens is that is rusted and has broken away from the pool wall. So that has to be done. The pool has to be replastered and repainted. We've come a long way from the days of two thousand and eight when the city's reserves were in the red and taxes and fees went up every year. Before I end, there are two finance items that must be addressed. First is the TRAN. The TRAN is merely a mechanism that we use. It's a tax and revenue anticipation note. That's what TRAN stands for. It, it is because of our lethargic, I'll call it lethargic, I'll be nice, state legislature. Now, Governor Shapiro presented his budget on time and balanced and it is stalled in the House and mostly in the Senate. Well, by now, this time of the year, they usually give us two million dollars for our state pension funds or our municipal pension funds. That didn't come in. So our cash flow is a little strained. So the TRAN will help us get through this period of time until the state decides to get their act together and do that. The also is the second one is the G A N, Grant Anticipation Note. Now you know, we have a lot of grants in the city. But all the grants that come from this state and federal government are reimbursement grants. In other words, you spend, the city spends the money first and then we get reimbursed for it. So we have about a five million dollars in grants that must be spent and these are, these reimbursable grants must, we, we pay the cost upfront and get reimbursed. Our negotiations to increase the lease with the water authority, I, I can't say this. I'm not happy to say it, but they've stalled. This is the second budget that we've worked on anticipating that we would increase the lease of the water authority. That lease is appraised at five million dollars and roughly five million, we're getting one point four. It's not fair to the residents of Easton that paid for the water facilities and this network that gets the, the water out to the suburbs so that the suburbs can have lower than average water rates. It's not fair. It's not fair to the Easton residents and I won't stand here. So there's several things that we can do. When the city residents paid for the water system, they created the water authority to sell the water to the suburban residents without going through the P U C. Otherwise, we'd, if we did it, we'd have to go through the P U C. Well, maybe we take the, one, one plan is to take the water company back. We just dissolve the water authority. It's an authority of the city. It doesn't have anything to do with the suburbs. I, as mayor, appoint and you as council approve all the members of the authority. Therefore, it's our authority. It's very clear in the, in the records that it's our authority. We have to deal with it. Our water rates, according to the, our consultant, are lower than the state average. Now, I'm not, I'm not asking our residents to pay more for water. But if the water authority puts the water rates up, I think we will have enough money to, to lower the property taxes to cover the water rate increase. The city really needs to consider our negotiations. Now I met with the chairman of the board. Great guy. I've been friends with him for years. Matter of fact, when he worked for Men Ed, we had much better relations with Men Ed. He worked right up the road and met with us all the time. But if it doesn't happen in, by the second quarter of twenty twenty-six, we need to take some action. We can't sit around and wait and, and let the suburban residents have water rates less than they should be because now my sister lives in the, in the northern part of, on the north side of Shenney Creek, which is Pennsylvania Water? Or Aqua, one of the two, I forget which one it is. But it's a private water company. Her rates are three times what ours are. Our first option would be to disband the authority and manage the system on our own and go through the state P U C for any increase in service we want to pass on to our suburban users. We could do that. The second is to wait until the lease expires in ten years and take back our system without renewing the lease. We could do that. Our third option is replace all the members of the authority and I'm ready to do it. My recommendation to you is I recommend you approve. My recommendation is that none of them be approved without committing to negotiating with the city. Either way, we must resolve this issue in twenty twenty-six, preferably by the second quarter. Our recommendation would be to use the interest only, only the interest to put it into a fund for capital improvements in the city that are needed in the city. I just told you about the firehouses and, and the pools. But also infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, I mean, they all need to be done. But I would also recommend that part of it goes into the general fund to help with the tax situation and, and to lower people's taxes. Our recommendation would be coming to you as soon as possible. We believe it's necessary and we believe that, that we should have it. That's our budget. I have nothing else to say other than we are here to answer any questions. We are here to provide any information. Whatever you need between now and December thirty-first to approve this budget, we agree with and we will help you through that. It's not easy doing a budget, but it's a lot easier than it was in the nineteen eighties when I was here. And I could tell you, it's a lot easier to do it when you're growing rather than when you're dying. So at that, I would say thank you very much for your attention and see Mark or Louis for any questions. Okay, we have public comment. Anybody in the public? I see there's no public here. They're all directors. Brian?
Brian is a public.
Brian is the public because he's, he writes for the public newspaper. All right. I'll look, any questions from city council?
Uh, Mayor, I have just one quick one. Uh, you're moving a little fast at the beginning. Parking garage. Two dollar a parking fee?
Yes.
Is that going to be all day?
All day.
So it's not going to change the public?
Let me just make a clarification. Just, it, it was two dollars and fifty cents.
Two dollars and fifty cents?
Yep.
I thought it was.
That's okay. That was just a clarification. You're, you're going fast, Mayor. Yep. But well, um, council, the administration's here to dig into the details. You're going to have copies of the budget. And both Mark and I can break down in more detail some of the items that the mayor had expressed. So we can go through that with you guys.
We have your, your budget and message in the binder. The, the message will highlight the revenue and expense changes and the budget sheets are there for us to go through. At Wednesday's meeting, we will decide on the budget hearings, when they'll be held. They're usually held on a Tuesday before our Wednesday meeting. But by Tuesday night, we'll have what we do first. We usually do public services one night. We do police and fire on the same night. We do planning and community development on another night. we do planning and community development on another night. We'll probably have about four public hearings before we actually take a vote and make any changes council would like to at least explore for the budget. Any other questions? I move for adjournment? Moved in second for adjournment, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Pennebone?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Yeah, I know, I know. That's all right.
Mark, how are you? Mayor? All right, Ken, take care.